Mayor Martin.
Here.
Vice Mayor Gore. Counselor Joyner.
Here.
Counselor Harris.
Here.
Counselor Denton. Counselor Pella.
Here.
Counselor Holloway. I have a call.
Okay, alright, is there a motion to go into closed meeting pursuant to Virginia Code Section two point two dash three seven eleven A one to discuss and consider personnel matters, including board and commission appointments, the assignment and performance of specific appointees and employees of city council, and to the extent such discussion will be aided thereby?
So moved.
I'll second it. Alright, is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call please.
Counselor Joyner.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Mayor Parton.
Yes.
Counselor Pella.
Yeah.
Motion passes four to zero.
Okay.
Counselor Pella.
Yes.
Motion passes four to zero.
Okay, certification please.
Oh, wait, wait.
Oh, go ahead.
Um, do we have, I was told we had two resignation letters that we have to accept the resignation for planning commission at HRJ.
Uh, we've gotten them, but, I mean.
To accept the resignations of Mr. and Ms. Blue?
Yeah, but I mean, we've never made a motion to accept anyone.
We've accepted.
Do we need a motion to accept someone's resignation, or is it just automatically?
Okay, in the past we have, that's why I'm just com- coming. It's fine, if it's accepted that way, it's fine.
Alright, certification please.
Certification pursuant to Virginia Code two point two dash three seven one two D, where only public business matters one lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements and two identified in the closed meeting motion discussed in closed meeting.
Uh, roll call.
Counselor Joyner.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Mayor Parton.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gore. Counselor Denton. Counselor Pella.
Yes.
We have a motion four to zero.
Okay. Alright, moving on to the financial committee report, Ms. Jordan.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. This is the first quarter finance committee meeting. The agenda is minutes from the last meeting. Fiscal year twenty five budget to actuals first quarters to include citywide, general fund, enterprise, schools, and departmental. Fiscal year twenty five change in fund balance, first quarter overtime report by department, first quarter collection report data integrators, overview of accounts payable and debt services paid, HRW trip analysis, the marina, fiscal year twenty four surplus of funds and allocation, and then additional reports from the commissioner and the treasurer's office. Page three is the citywide budget to actuals for the for- end of first quarter, which is July through September. Citywide for first quarter, we are trending point five nine percent lower in revenues for twenty five versus twenty four. Expenses for first quarter are trending point seven four percent lower for twenty five and twenty four. And overall, we are per- we are trending eight point seven nine percent or nineteen million le- less than where we should be for the first quarter. The city should be at roughly twenty five percent or fifty six point five. Again, the revenues for the city of Hopewell, the due dates are December, June, uh, February.
Yeah, that's fine.
Are you saying that we're, we nineteen million represents less? Tell me that again, I, because I don't understand it. We're nineteen million dollars down?
So, if you were looking at true budget to actuals, so there's four quarters in the budget, so it should be twenty five percent across each quarter. So, although the revenues for Hopewell don't come in, they don't really start coming into December, we won't really see how, how good we're trending until December. Because that's going to be the first half of your real estate that's going to be due. The second half is due in June, and then you have, um, I believe it's machinery and tools and stuff that are due in February. So, a lot of your revenues in the city of Hopewell come in later. Some other localities that have revenues due every quarter, so they can see a better trend analysis, because they have constant revenues constantly flowing through the city. But Hopewell is different.
Is that something we need to consider doing or something?
Um, I would leave that up to decision of council, but yes, it would, it would definitely ease up on the residents, I believe, if they're paying once a quarter instead of twice a year lump sum, and then it also show consistent revenues coming throughout the city, throughout the city.
Consider next year.
Would you recommend that for personal property, as well as opposed to one time each year?
Personal property is usually twice, uh, February, December or February. But the thing about it, when it comes to personal property, you don't want to get in a situation where you have personal property and real estate due in the same month, so then you would have second quarter of real estate due in December and personal property due in December, so that's a lot on the taxpayers as well. But there's other options that you can move around some of your due dates to, to show consistent revenue coming through the city.
Okay. Give us some recommendations?
Yes, ma'am, I will.
A calendar so that, that can be considered.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I think that'd be a great idea.
Yeah, all these number represents based on four quarters, twenty five percent, but really, we don't get the money in, so I say. I was like, wow.
So, this is the citywide budget to actual first quarter. This is broken down by revenues as well as expenditures by our, our main code. And there are comments on each, uh, line item as to versus twenty four over twenty five where increase or slight increases coming from. Again, public service, personal property, machinery and tools, they have later due dates, so therefore you really want, it's not, what we're getting in revenue is based off of collections, just the same as penalties and interest. If we're getting additional delinquency collections, they're collecting more, of course it'll be higher. If they're collecting less, it's going to be lower. For anything that's outstanding.
You know, I would, I'm sorry, Ms. Mayor. Miscellaneous revenue. I hate the word miscellaneous, you know that, you don't know that, but that's been a pet peeve of mine. What in the world is miscellaneous revenue? Ma- uh, revenue.
I would have to drill down, I think I had it on the last report, what made up miscellaneous revenue, I didn't put it on this one, but I would definitely get that information.
I forget a lot these days, so.
Uh, Vice Mayor Gore.
And I know you're still getting acclimated to working here, but, um, to Counselor Pella's point, we historically ask ad nauseam for miscellaneous revenue to broken out. So, um, while you're doing your next report, if you can also start to work in the background to add those individual line items.
Okay.
That is what, that's what we've been requesting to see, so that way it's very clear on the upfront. And then also for non-departmental, um, outside agencies, we kind of understand, because we have the list, we approve it in the budget. For non-departmental, um, in the past, it's been different things as well for there. So, can you do the same thing for non-departmental, and then also for other?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Any other questions on this slide, citywide? Okay, moving on to our general fund, page five. General fund budget to actuals for, uh, fiscal year first quarter. General fund first quarter is trending one point six one or four hundred thousand lower in revenues from twenty five versus twenty four. Expenses for twenty five are trending one point six or three hundred and twenty thousand higher than fiscal year twenty four. The same concept applies for each of the funds across the city. We should be roughly at twenty five percent or seventeen million. The key due dates for the city of Hopewell are December, February, and June. This is a general fund breakdown. Any questions?
So, when you say that expenses are trending higher, is that due to the budgeted trends higher, or is this?
It's due to the actuals, yes, ma'am.
But, again, is it comparison to the budget, what we budgeted for?
No, ma'am, it's co- it's comparative to the fiscal year actuals for twenty four and fiscal.
The fiscal year actuals.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, where does that fall what we budgeted for?
Um.
I mean, I don't, I don't expect you to have an answer right now, because it's not on the slide. But, I would say, in comparison to what we budgeted, because in my perception, and I think we've, it's been proven the last couple of months, we have been over budgeting. And so, um, I would like to see where we are in comparison to the budgeted amount. So, you do see what I'm saying, because for example, I hate to pick on Director Bennett, but he's right there. They said for economic developments, um, one of his line items, we have fifty thousand dollars, but he's spending seventy five, right?
Right.
Um, that's what we need to see, because in particular wastewater renewal is the culprit this last time that had us go over six million dollars and we weren't aware of it. So, uh, staffs should be doing a better job of managing, but then also with the controls that we have now put in place, those types of expenses pass their budget, the allocation should not occur.
Right.
Um, but I still would like to see in comparison to, obviously actual to actual, but budgeted to actual as well.
Okay.
Um, so this is another bullet point that we hope.
Sure, yes, ma'am.
And in the future, when you see that a particular department is going beyond their budget, that would be in one of your presentations to let the council be, I mean, bring it out so that we will double.
Yes, ma'am, we did include budget to actuals by department in this presentation, and we'll do that moving forward as well.
Very good.
Yes, ma'am. Any other questions? Alright, slide seven, is enterprise fund budget to actuals for the first quarter. Enterprise fund for first quarter is trending one point nine seven or two point four million higher in revenues for twenty five versus twenty four. This is basically due to on-time billing. Last year, there was a lot of late billing, and enterprise fund, we're on time. We have a deadline of making sure the billing is going out by the twentieth of every month moving forward. Expenses for twenty five are trending six point three or one point eight million less in expenses in twenty four. Same concept applies for enterprise as it does any other fund within the city. Any questions on the enterprise? Okay. Schools. Schools is trending two point seven four or one point three million dollars less in revenues for twenty five versus twenty four. Now, this could be for timing differences, I know we do have some school funding coming in the sixteenth.
Today, please.
Slide, your slide behind.
There you go.
One more.
Another, thank you, there you go.
Um, this could be due to timing, I know we do have some funding coming in from the schools on the sixteenth. So, again, uh, we've been working with the treasurer's office to make sure that we're monitoring the cash flows, um, to make sure that the city is meeting payroll and accounts payable, making our debt payments and everything on time.
Is that money coming from the state feds, or just the state?
Yes, ma'am.
Portion of there? And when do they normally get their money? Like in quarterly fashion, or?
Most of the time it's quarterly payments, but it also depends on whatever, um, if they have grant funding and stuff. If it's based off of reimbursements, or whatever the grant, however the grant is set up. But, what we've been doing is, like I said, working with, um, the treasurer's accountant, and she'll provide me with, uh, update as for week to week, what we're, what EDIs or state income we're getting ready to receive through the city, so we can just keep a track on cash.
And who is in your office responsible to ensure the reimbursement of all the state money in all, in different, like CSA and schools?
Oh, yes, to, to double check the revenue, yes, ma'am, our accounting manager is responsible for reviewing the revenue.
Would it, would it be impossible for you to know whether or not we always get reimbursed for CSA?
No, um, I was able, I can, I'm able to pull something in the system. When I looked at it last year, I believe we received, I want to say three point two, but I'll double check the number, but you can definitely see in the system where the revenues are coming in from the state.
Yeah, in, in your spare time, whichever, which is none. I would just like to know if we got reimbursed every, for the last five years?
Five years.
From the, from the state, for CSA funds in particular.
Yes, ma'am. Our expenses are trending point eight seven percent or one hundred and forty eight thousand more in twenty five versus twenty four. Same concept applies for the schools. Any questions on schools? Um, page eleven.
I see this slide, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
I didn't see the department to actual.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. Um, slide eleven is the new, um, report that we put together for the budget, department budget to actuals first quarter. You'll see the adopted budget for fiscal year twenty five and by department, and the year-to-date amount spent per bu- for per department, the budget remaining, the percent of budget year-to-date, and if it's on trend or not, with a yes, a true or false, and then the comments as to why it's not on trend moving forward. Have any questions about this slide?
I do have a question, wait, wait.
Yes, ma'am.
So, this, no, this is, hmm, this is not the overtime sheet, nevermind, I mean.
This is just based off the first quarter, so you spend like twenty five percent.
So, this is the, the budget remaining for this year, right?
Yes, ma'am.
That part of it is that, and so they've only, like, someone has a two million, accounting has a two million, is that two million dollars?
Mm-hmm, that's our adopted budget for the fiscal year.
And you've only spent thirty, three hundred and eighty seven thousand.
Yes, ma'am, year-to-date, and then we have a remaining budget of one point eight. The percent of the budget that has been used year-to-date is nineteen percent, and if we're on trend, yes. Because remember, it's four quarters in a year, so anything over twenty five would be off trend.
Over budgeting again, though, these numbers, right?
Say it again, I'm sorry.
Due to over budgeting?
No, this is just showing you a breakdown of budget to actuals by department. I remember at the, uh, a previous finance committee meeting, I believe that you were asking to see budget to actuals by department.
Yes, I'm sorry, that's why I said, my bad.
So, and then the comments, again, are just the reasons as to why it's over. Now, as far as, um, some of the invoices, you know, some of our stuff we pay in a lump sum upfront. So, if you would break it out over a twelve-year period, that, it would be on trend, but because some of this stuff is paid upfront in a lump sum, then it's going to look like it's off trend for right now.
With, with regard to that, though, when we're doing the budgeting, and I think what we're asking is, I think, in terms of a seasonalized budget, when you're, when you're looking at, when we're budgeting, instead of looking at historically how we've done, are we just automatically doing twenty five, twenty five, twenty five? You know, so that you have a, a little bit better handle on, I don't know, when there were some, some blips on the radar screen, do, do you know where I'm coming from? It's just, it, like, so you're, you know, when we're budgeting, we're just going, you know, every quarter twenty five percent, instead of looking at historical data. Um, why are we not doing that? Um, is it just something we've always done?
Oh, you're talking about when you actually come before council for the budget?
When you're actually budgeting, you know, doing the, you know, doing these monthly budgets, that kind of thing. And, um, you know, even like, I'm looking here, I don't know, that's off you.
HRW.
I think I understand what you're asking, but correct me if I'm wrong, because you're using the word budgeting, but I think you're looking at the trend, she's projecting based off a quarter, right? And so, you're saying, are you using twenty five percent because it's just broken down by fours? Or are you looking at historically on the front, and let's say, again, development likes to spend their money on the front end, so really, instead of saying twenty five percent, there should be thirty percent.
Yes, we're, I'm looking at the trend as well, because I'm looking at for anything that looks off moving forward. So, anything that doesn't look like it's going to, we're going to be on the right track.
You are going to be looking at that moving forward.
Yes.
Okay, that's really, that's really, because this is, you know, ju- well, just basically here, what you're looking at is anything that di- that fell out of the twenty five percent range as a false, you know?
Right.
And, um, if we know historically there are certain departments that do certain things a certain way, we don't want to just be budgeting, you know, that way, it gives a false impression when you're looking at things. I mean, for council, for you guys, for whatever, so I hope that in the future, y'all will be looking at that.
Yes, ma'am.
Alright.
And so, when you come back and pres- when will you present the second quarter?
Say it again, I'm sorry.
When, when are you going, uh, report out to, for the second quarter?
That will be in January. Second quarter will be at the end of December.
When is the first co- first quarter?
September, the end of September.
Oh, they're on the federal fiscal, I mean, they're state fiscal.
That's, that's my confusion, I thought this was January, February, March.
Oh, no, ma'am.
July, this is September, first quarter, this is September through December.
So, this is the federal.
I'm sorry, state, state fiscal year.
And, oh, the feds, the feds do something different, don't they?
Yes, feds do something different, this is state fiscal year.
This is June, July, August.
Yes, ma'am, because the city runs from July to June.
Oh, yeah.
July, August, September.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, for, um, CSA, just piggybacking off of Counselor Pella's question, for Q one, they only spent six percent, and this is, this six percent includes, it can't include their reimbursements today, because it's two.
This is just expenses.
Expenses.
Yes, ma'am. So, let me clarify, this is not revenue, revenue, you don't budget revenue by department.
No, nevermind, I'm, I'm, I just mixed up two things in my head, nevermind.
That's, okay. But yes, this is just expenses, what have been paid year-to-date.
Right, and then they're bouncing out with the others, so I got it. Sorry.
That's okay. Alright. Slide twelve. This is a new report that we're going to start presenting as well every quarter, it is a change in fund balance. Just so we can see where we're standing at throughout the fiscal year. These are preliminary figures in the preliminary beginning balance, which is on the end, over here, on the fund balance. These preliminary figures come from the fiscal year twenty four preliminary, uh, numbers.
Run that, may I get, tell me again, tell me again.
Um, the prelim- the preliminary figures here, preliminary beginning balance is coming from the ending of fiscal year twenty four balances.
But, kudos to you, because this is something we have never been able to get in all my decade in your council, and begging for this information, so. Round of applause there, seriously. Um, in regards to this, um, are the actual funds actually literally separate sections? Because we discovered is all of our pools of money is in one pot of money. So, you say fund, but then it has different fund numbers, but then again, we do it at the county, behind the scenes, we learned that it wasn't like this.
That's true.
Is this, is this with it broken out, or just not with it broken out, but you know it goes with what?
This is, this is for the accounting purposes, you're talking about the banking side of it. The banking side of it, the city has one major bank account that encompasses everything, includes the schools, HRW, everything. The accounting piece of it is, we actually break it down by fund, so that we can track the money that belongs to which fund.
Correct, and, and what I'm trying to say is, and you checked this against what's supposed to be in the account, because I think before, there was a Robin Peter Paul tax action, so I'm just trying to make sure that it's all, there's a math math in this, what I'm trying to figure.
Yes, at first I was a little concerned, but looking at it now and looking at general fund and everything, yes.
Okay.
Compared to what was in the balance in the bank account from fiscal year, working on these preliminary figures, yes. I can say that, um, okay with the figures, but until we get final audit.
Okay.
Information.
You're close.
Yeah. Doesn't look, um, as off as it did prior.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Alright, any other questions on a change in fund balance? Okay, next page, please, page thirteen is, uh, overtime by department for first quarter. These are just the departments that had overtime for, um, so far this fiscal year. And again, it's similar to the other report, where you have the, what was budgeted for overtime, year-to-date actuals, the remaining balance, the percent of the budget, whether or not it's on trend, and the reason why it's not on trend. Of course, with fire and the larger departments, police, HRW, there's a lot of vacancies that exist, social services. So, they're always going to have higher overtime numbers, um, but we just want to make sure that even though they're off this quarter, that they kind of fall in line at the end of the fiscal year. We don't want it to be like a hundred and something, uh, percent over budget.
How has that been in the past, would it, um, you know, I mean?
I can pull, um.
Just, I, I would just be interested to know how, how we did last year. Maybe it's not relevant, but it might be, I just would like to know.
Okay.
Yeah, the social services department, that's a bit much, um.
Well, I, oh, that's, well, I can tell you why.
Why?
Because there were a lot of, I mean, a lot, uh, foster kids who had to actually stay and spend their nights in the department of social services.
Right.
And that means a person has to be with them twenty-four, almost eighteen hours, I was, when they get out of school, they come home to social services. And they, and that, that was a big trend. Everything went out of whack, so, and that, I guess, how much did they, I don't know if they had planned for that much overtime, I'm sure they didn't.
Twenty-one thousand.
Yeah.
And they do have a lot, social service has a lot of turnover, it's a high turnover department, unfortunately. So, by the time you hire somebody, you got three leaving, you hire one, so, that's.
So, in terms of these other departments, so if Storm Mark doesn't have a budget, so how are they paying for that? And then treasurer is over their allocation, so what does it do with both of them?
So, what they're going to have to do is, when we send out the quarterly budget to actuals to the departments, they're going to have to choose a line item from where this money is going to come from. That's what they're going to have to do, it's not, they're not getting additional funding of any type, it has to come from a different line item, so that's allocated to something else.
Now, who has to tell them that in advance if they, if they don't know?
It should be, um, something that has been happening anyway, to, to keep.
No.
Track on, uh.
No one has told them, no one has told them that per se in writing, it's, it's just been adjusted at the end of the budget year, that's where they got the dollars from whatever's left over in their budget. They zeroed it out.
So, did it come from other areas?
But it had to come from within their budget, whatever they had left over in their line item.
So, no one's been in a position where they didn't have extra money left over?
That's the problem, this is probably a poor accounting, it's because they should be moving it over now when they know the negative.
Yeah, we, we, we're going to do budget to actuals of, to the departments as well, to include personnel, because, um, I've seen before, sometimes, um, modules don't talk sometimes, and you can have, um, HR showing something different. So, we just want the pe- the department heads to verify that their personnel, not only their operating piece is correct, but their personnel is correct. And if there's anything that needs to be adjusted, we need to get it fixed earlier than later.
Yes, well, the problem I have is that, if you've had an empty position for five years, and every year you report it as excess in the end, that don't make sense. Is that position really needed?
Right.
We got, we, we, uh, salary savings, every year salary savings, I mean, we got to look at that. Do we really need the position, I would say? And can, I mean, maybe we need to see a reporter, how many, is, how long has these positions been open, is that possible, Dr. May?
Yes, we can run a report.
Okay, thank you.
But I, but I think you, you're going to find that, uh, your position turnover is in public works, water, police, and fire. When we have salary savings, that's where they come from, they take the longest to hire, the longest to recruit. Then, when, when you do recruit, they got to go into training for, for X amount of months before they're actually on the payroll. So, there, there will always be salary savings in, in those locations. Um, police in particular, when they have salary saves, it goes towards their overtime. Um, and it, for all the officers that have, you know, overtime, we take those salary savings and apply it to that location.
They got a budget line for overtime.
Yeah, but there is.
It's not, it's not, it, they always go over it because of the vacancies that they have available.
Just piggybacking off of Counselor Pella's original question, who is going to tell the departments each quarter that they need to balance this out? You are, either send an email, or is the?
Yes, ma'am, it's, the plan is to send an email, as, as well as with an Excel spreadsheet that shows personnel, as well as operating costs. And pretty much, uh, it's going to be a memo that says, the following line items are in the negative, please do a budget transfer to move funding from a, a good standing line item to the negative, to clear the negative.
By a set date, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you have a date in mind?
We have to, I still have to develop it. Um, this is the beginning, though, because I can pull the information to the way I need to pull it for depart- by, by department. And then, this is just a pivot table, so I'm not sure if, if you know how pivot table works. If I click on that department in its table, it'll pull down all of the items, that's including the department. So, all I do have to cut and paste. So, the plan is to try to have everything done by the end of this month and sent to the departments.
Yeah, so the only thing I would say is definitely, um, the end of this month is good, because then that's a quick change in munis, um, and you need to report who is not compliant to Dr. Mayker, so Dr. Mayker can tell council.
Yes, ma'am.
And, and I'm, I'm saying, we don't know what's going to happen in November, I might say nothing about anybody that's running, because I got two people here in the audience as candidates. And, and I'm, obviously, we don't know what's gonna happen in November, I might say nothing about anybody that's running, because I got two people here in the audience as candidates. All I'm saying is you got four people right now, seven people right now, who really are putting a lot of investment into these finances getting fixed. And so if you can report out in November the status of that, um so we can um one, get staff. Called trained to operate more efficiently and more professionally when it comes to their budgets. Uh two, start off this quarter solid with, for, as opposed to you chasing tails. But then also um having the reinforcements that you have now, again, thus being committed to making these improvements. While you still have us here um to back it up, so I would say, Dr. Minker, um by our first or second meeting in November, please make a note. And madam clerk as well, um madams clerks as well, to um put down the agenda for us to have like a report out. In terms of who was non-compliant to your requests. Because, I mean, and then also, I can't speak for all the council, but I'll say. Robert Bob being here, we sped the tone, we kept saying that we did not want to baby anyone any longer, we didn't wanna have. The grace period has come and gone, and um we're looking for people to be compliant and, and also participatory in the changes for an improvement of the culture. Here when it comes to fiscal management, so with that being said, don't offer any grace periods. It, it should already be understood that they need to do what they need to do, so put your deadline out there. Say who's not responsive to Dr. Minker, and I, again, I can't speak for council, but I would say that I think they would agree that we're kind of over the grace periods. That we expect people to do what they need to do as directors.
I've got a question on this overtime by department, I'd like to know what the um, what the fiscal twenty-four actuals were.
Yes, ma'am, I can add that.
You could add that column, because I think that would be, I think that'd be useful in looking at, you know, did we budget correctly? I mean, you know, what were the actuals and, was I'm looking at, I'm just, I'm just looking at police, because the police is the largest number there. But you know, where were we, is this budget really realistic, that kind of thing?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, ma'am.
Next slide, slide number fourteen. Is the fiscal year twenty-five data integrators collections first quarter. These are the collection rates for data integrators, and it's broken down by um month, July, August, and September, and then first quarter. And it's gonna be uh stormwater, solid waste, and wastewater, what was building, what was collected, and the percentage amount.
So this uncollected amount, how are they addressing that?
The, you talking about the delinquencies? There, we have another meeting with data integrators. Um we did get a, a good leeway as to determining some of the other issues that presented itself with data integrators from the beginning. Um I just sent another email to Mr. Denton today, asking for a follow-up on the information he was supposed to provide us. And then we're gonna establish another meeting to talk about the um delinquency piece. I know Dr. Minker was working on some things too, as far as um collections for data integr, integrators and stuff she wanted to happen.
Yeah, Dr. Minker, where are we at with trying, didn't we, didn't we support bringing them in-house?
Yeah, we have, but. Trying to get the billing corrected with data integrators have, has really been a challenge. And the last call that we were on, we were, we discussed um having the collections. Being brought in-house and they maintain the billing. Okay, and so there was a lot of technical um steps that we need to take first. And they were willing to, we talked about the integration piece into munis to be able to allow that to happen. And that requires a module in munis to accept the utility. And so the goal and the hope is to build that into the twenty-five budget, so we can pay for it, it's a pretty costly module, somewhere in the three hundred. Thousand, and then we can begin the project of the integration piece. So that's one part of the conversation, and then the second part is the collection and why we haven't really been receiving all the monies that's due to the city. So there's uh two conversations that are happening with data, data integrators. Uh every meeting is not for the same conversation, so we're not talking about the same thing even every time. One is planning to bring this in-house, and then the second is the collection and, and where we are with collecting our dollars.
And they're still charging collections, correct? So what is the, what are their reported like issues with that? This is higher than what has been in the past, so I'm not, yeah, I just, I see data increase, I have PTSD, so. What is, so what, what are they saying is their current issues?
The biggest issue is when it's counter established with Virginia Water. They don't require that they have social security numbers or anything like that. So when you don't, when you set up a new utility account, and you can just give somebody your name and your address, if you don't pay the bill and you disappear, how they gonna track you down? They don't have a social security number or anything like that to be able to charge it against your credit. That's one of the biggest things, um issues when it comes to the collection piece for even with Virginia Water. We have a meeting with them Friday, matter of fact, I believe it is, um to talk about a new process for when they um start a new utility accounts. Because it's very difficult to um put a lien against somebody's property or. Forward into TC, TACS for collections on utility payments, if you don't have their social security number. They could use a fake name, all they have to have is a name and a lease and ID, you can get that anywhere, but it doesn't have a social security number tied to it.
It's also affected the collection rate at American Water, they have committed this as well. But it doesn't really seem to be any interest or movement towards um a, a better way to have a unique identifier. So that's part of the discussion for Friday as well.
Any other questions on data integrators? Slide fifteen is just an overview of accounts payable and debt services, showing that the city is paying their debt on time. As they're, as they're required to, the accounts payable first quarter is the number of invoices that have been processed for three months, as well as the amount paid out. HRW true-up analysis, this is a cumulative over from twenty-eight uh fiscal year eighteen through twenty-four. The above references amounts are credits that are in parentheses, the amounts do are plus from industry from eighteen through twenty-four. Again, these figures are preliminary figures, based off the information that we have received for uh year-to-date budgeted actuals. As well as any other accrued invoices for the fiscal year twenty-four paid in, paid in twenty-five but accrued back to twenty-four. Any questions on this?
They, this is money that's coming to the city.
This, yes, it's true up, so.
I just correct, I, I understand true, tell me.
So it's the credits from the industries, it's the, either they're gonna owe or they're gonna um have a credit on their um. But it hasn't been done, from my understanding, it hasn't been done since like twenty eighteen forward, I believe. Yeah, so this is a cumulative figure, well, they're also working on a fourth amendment, um but we haven't heard an update about that as of right now.
What's the fourth amendment? And we're up to date now, I mean, we've got, you, you know, we, no more, no more, no more invoices appearing.
No, ma'am, the city accrues um, has a sixty-day accrual, so August thirty-first with the end. And one of the biggest ones that caused the fluctuation of the numbers was there was one invoice for like one point three million dollars that had to be paid. So we had a meeting with the commission earlier today, and we kind of talked about the true-up analysis. And told them where the discrepancy was coming from, but we do accrue on a sixty-day basis, again, like I said, there was one particular invoice that was one point three by itself. So that's a large amount of money, that had to be accrued back to twenty-four.
And what is West Rock, uh, I would give it, I guess.
They, this is what they owe, based off of their billing and capital and some others.
And they're the only one that really owes, so. Can you explain that, I mean, very briefly, or um, no, can't explain briefly. I know this is not one of the commission meetings, I just was, you know, but it just stands out there.
Yes, ma'am, I can definitely provide a breakdown for everything and the reasons for.
Industry folks happen to call, at least I understand. Alright, thank you so much.
You're welcome. Next slide is the marina, um mayor pardon, you requested that we talk about um giving the marina five hundred thousand dollars for repairs. It really wouldn't be a loan, because the marina falls under the general fund, so it's just not, we couldn't put interest on ourself. So it would just be a transfer, but the rate of return on this investment in the marina is, if you can see. Currently, before any um repairs are done for the year, the revenue, additional revenues would be twenty-three point nine. Thousand, uh twenty-three thousand nine hundred, sorry, and then after the repairs, the potential revenue is a hundred and three. So within five-year period, the city could recoup the five hundred thousand that is given for the repairs. And any additional revenues would just come to the city in the general fund, year over year.
So how do we set it up so it is an enterprise fund? Because that was the, the big point of contention, that we want the marina to be self-funding.
Okay, um we would have to do it in the system, and then I would just have to get with the external auditors to let them know that. We changed out the marina to be enterprise, now the one thing I can say, um. Looking at the expenses, when I looked at them, some of that's about in line, it still would be a um. It would be revenues over expenses about plus eighty thousand, I think, when I looked at it the last time. So we can definitely talk about breaking it out, and I'll work on doing that piece. And making it an actual enterprise fund, because right now it does well into the general fund.
Yeah, because that was just the biggest thing, is that, yeah, we wanted to just have it so that way it can self, it can be self-sustaining. So that way we don't have, you know, the issue of, you know, everything being dilapidated, fall back in our laps, you know, some massive price tag. And then that way, you know, it could loan money to the fund, and then the fund could actually, you know, give, the city could make more money off of it.
Any other questions on this?
We're making money off ourselves.
Hey, it works.
Slide thirteen is twenty-four surplus fund allocation, staff was asked their recommendation on half of the twenty-four surplus and how it should be allocated. And establish reserve funds adopted by the city's financial policies. So we have capital reserve, one point five million, due to outstanding unfunded capital, remember outstanding unfunded capital currently is like four and a half million dollars. Unassigned would be one point five for, assigned would be one point five, and that would include the schools ERP as well as the marina. Budget stabilization, five hundred thousand, replenishment of fund balance, five hundred thousand.
Okay, so. If I'm understanding this correctly, the money that's currently been appropriated with these items. We should still have enough to take care of these position requests that the Robert Bob group has identified as critical. The, the legal assistant, the attorney's office, the ERP administrator, and the economic development specialist. Well, and the fi, and the fire generator, um assume that.
On this sheet, right, what he just named.
No, this was on the sheet that Consetta gave us at the beginning of the meeting, here you go. Well, that's encouraging. Now, would, do you have a leftover amount that comes from all that? Or, I mean.
Yeah, we allocated everything.
Right, but what I'm saying, oh, okay, so, okay, so then that would take up everything from the surplus, okay.
And then moving forward, most of the time, if you don't allocate, it's gonna go to unassigned fund balance.
I'm sorry.
If it's not allocated for specific use, it'll go to unassigned fund balance.
Okay, so then it would, okay.
So why, why do you have replenishment of fund balance, five hundred K?
Um, that's one of the financial policies that was adopted in the replenishment of the fund balance is, for instance, if you had to use it. Like you have been using it moving um thus far, is to replenish what you've been using. So you guys have been budgeting, we're using the um surplus, you use the surplus?
To balance the budget.
Right, so this is to replenish the fund balance that you have been.
I mean, did we already do that, though?
Yeah, that's, say, say, say what you said again, is this the additional years, is this the additional years requirement that is, is referenced here?
So the city has been balancing their budget using surplus. Um instead of it going to the fund balance, it's been going into day-to-day operations. Your follow, financial policies that you adopted are saying that you are gonna replenish the fund balance that you have been taking. Yes, ma'am.
Alright.
And that's the one that's like a twenty percent now, okay, gotcha.
That's that five hundred K. So we use five hundred K of last year's money to build us a recovery, okay, got it. So really, it's, it's too long going unassigned, okay.
This is encouraging.
Okay, on the back, can we talk, what is uh assigned earmarked funding, one point five million, oh, that's the marina.
Yes, ma'am, so.
And school ERP. Yeah, that's, doesn't match.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear your question.
You have assigned earmarked funding, one point five million for the marina and the school ERP. The marina is five hundred thousand, the school is three hundred thousand, that is the extra seven hundred thousand dollars.
The marina is five hundred thousand, but the Hopewell Public Schools ERP. Three sixty, you got your generator.
No, a, a sign on the screen has one fifth.
But it should include.
That's eight hundred, seven hundred thousand dollars.
We didn't list all of what we. Put the detail, yeah, we. Generator in there, we put the schools in there, and then we assumed that council would, uh, the, the positions that are here.
The, these three uh critical ones.
The mayor asked, hey, would we have any left over, and we said we, we budgeted, we're in the assigned.
She's saying.
They want, you put it on the back, I mean, that's, this.
Save seven hundred thousand dollars for, for three positions.
Well, we're not voting on this. Put this into like how you do your presentation, because yours is a little bit more clear, like um. What are we doing?
On the, on the description and detail, we just need to put what make up the one point five. Which was the positions, the generator, the marina, and the schools.
Yeah, it needs to be clear, definitely.
Yeah, and budget stabilization, is that for the Robert Bob? What is that?
That's one of the funds that um that they recommended that we adopt, and we added in our financial policies. It was like a list of four funds that we had to go and create, and that was one of them.
I don't remember them saying that.
We had, how much total finance, total surplus fund, we had seven million. If I added these up some kind of way to make sense, I would come up with seven million dollars.
Yeah, if you can just include, if you can.
It's only five point five. It's five point five, because we had, remember, the seven point two also included the one point two that went to Churchill. That was paid upfront, so you have to subtract that from the seven point two.
Your sheet has four million, four point five million dollars surplus funds allocated.
Four total accounts.
What this sheet has is how much? Is not, is more than one million dollars. Economic development, five hundred thousand, generated two eighty, Hopewell Public Schools, three sixty, that's more than a million, so. That's beyond the surplus. That's beyond the surplus.
I know, so the original surplus was seven point two. Mine is the one million that was given to Winston Churchill. And then it was another project also, that took it away.
The project's on the back sheet, there's seven million dollars, one point two went to Winston Churchill. The property purchase of eleven hundred Maplewood, one oh four two, the CSA funding.
Put it on one sheet, Dr. Manker, please, thank you.
Is seventy-five, that's what we spent so, so far, you had leftover five point five.
I think if you just, I think if you just annotate, yeah, these items right here in the description. I think that will clear everything up.
Cause this is saying requests, understand how you wanna spend it.
That's how you wanna spend it.
Yeah, mhm, just need a little header, and then like some explanation to the side.
Go ahead, Ms. Jordan.
That's all I have, it's in the presentation, so for our next, um, November, we're gonna do a more detailed breakdown. We're gonna talk about the sewer rate study that, um, was presented at the twenty-seventh council meeting. And I'll provide an update on the twenty through twenty-four, um, caffres.
I'm so bummed, I'm leaving when you were here, because you did a really good report.
Best finance director since Ellison Hager.
Thank you so much.
You're very welcome, you're very welcome, and I'll take, I have notes of what everybody's request was, and we'll bring it up for a next council meeting.
Are there any other questions for, uh, Ms. Jordan or Dr. Manker? Alright, hearing none? Do I have a motion to adjourn? All in favor, say aye, aye, any opposed, none, alright.